October 7th at 7:00 PM. Special Town Meeting will be held on Saturday, October 16th at 9:00 AM. Are there any other announcements for anybody, from anyone? Tonight? Dr. Blake, special acknowledgements.
Do we have any to see here?
Okay. Does anyone else have any special acknowledgements?
I was just gonna talk about the high school curriculum night last night. Um, I don't know if that's an announcement or a special acknowledgement, but um, I'll make it a special acknowledgement. Um, it was, it was great. It was my first real, um, high school curriculum night. Um, I was really impressed with all the teachers and how passionate they were. Super excited to be back in school. Um, for those of you who haven't been, you get a copy of your child's schedule and you get to go to every class for 10 minutes. So you get the real lay of the building and you get to meet all the teachers. But I was most impressed with how every single teacher mentioned, um, the gap sort of and what, you know, what, what their perception of what the kids have sort of missed either in academic learning or skills that they've missed. And they're just, I was just very impressed that the teachers really seemed in tune with, um, with the, with the kids and how much really trying to figure out what they missed and how to catch the kids up. So, and what, you know. I was just, I was very impressed, um.
Thank you.
What their perception of, sort of, missed either in academic learning or skills that they've missed.
That was my 15th.
I was just very impressed that the teachers really seemed in tune with, um, with the kids and how much really trying to figure out what they missed and how to catch the kids up. So, I was just, I was very impressed, um.
And how they're doing things a little differently. They're a little more technologically savvy, they're a little more capable with, you know, just moving quickly to non-paper things, but, um, but they're all ready to learn. So I think that's a great testament to our kids as well, that we've been able to get them through this and, uh, and they're, and they're ready to go and back at it.
Thanks. Thank you, Dr. Flynn. Okay. Citizens queries and comments. We have two people that would like to come up. Would you please, uh, come on up and, uh, we welcome you to the microphone. Please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amanda Orlando.
Can I turn this off?
Sure.
So I can hear you. Okay. Sorry.
That's okay. Um, my name's Amanda Orlando. Uh, my address is 7 Old Essex Road. Um, good evening. I'm the mother of three children. My oldest son is in first grade at Winthrop this year. I am one of many parents across the country who is speaking up for our children who cannot yet speak out for themselves. Kids depend on us as parents, educators, to make decisions based on their best interests, and masks are absolutely not in their best interest. Masks inhibit breathing fresh air, socialization, seeing teachers enunciate while speaking, recognizing emotions of their classmates, and showing their own feelings and emotions. Is their social, emotional, and psychological well-being even at consideration? Aside from there being zero science to back up the usage of masks, according to the CDC, children have a 99.998% rate of survival from this virus. That is virtually zero. So are we trying to protect them or are we making it their duty to protect us? The vaccine is available to all adults who choose to get it. Children are being groomed and fearing that they will become sick or make everyone else sick. That burden is much more than they should have to carry. Why is it that any of us in this room could go out to dinner across the street tonight or go to a packed concert or sports stadium this weekend completely unmasked, yet my six-year-old has to wear a sweaty spit-soaked bacteria-filled muzzle while he's sitting at his desk learning for six hours a day? Masks are thieves of innocence and literal barriers to the educational experience they all deserve. The fact that there are allotted times for masks breaks at school should be a red flag for all of us, that they are uncomfortable and unhealthy. Maybe we should move classes to Sky Zone or Chuck E. Cheese where masks aren't required so our kids can actually see the smiles on each other's faces or notice their friends' facial expressions if they are upset. Medical mandates of any kind have no place in a free society. If a parent chooses to put a mask on their child, let it be their own prerogative. Let's do better. Let's let Ipswich set the precedent in this state by being the first to put our kids first and let them breathe. Let's teach them that they don't have to be scared anymore and that they all should have, that all they should have to worry about is being kids. Unmask our children. Enough is enough. I'm going to finish with a quote by Nelson Mandela. "Our children are our greatest treasure. They are our future. Those who abuse them tear the fabric of our society and weaken our nation." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Caroline?
Yeah.
Would you like to give us a high school representative report?
Sure. Hello, Ipswich School community. Below are some of the recent happenings of the Ipswich High School. In the arts department, theater students are working on and putting together, as well as directing and rehearsing, their own series of one-act plays. This is just begun, so we're not sure when it will be performed. Um, in the sports, sports are getting back to normal. Most sports have had their first games and meets in the past couple of weeks. The boys and girls cross-country teams had their first meet yesterday. Unfortunately, both teams lost, but it was nice to be able to have spectators again. For clubs and fundraisers, most clubs have either met for the first time this past week or are planning on meeting at the beginning of October. In general, students are adjusting back into the school year, especially back to the old schedule and the workload that comes with it. But in general, everyone is happy to be back to a normal school year routine full of busy and exciting activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any? Welcome back.
Thank you.
It's great to have you at this end of the table, too. I said that at the last meeting, but it really, it really started to feel better.
We're getting this signal from, you have to move the mics toward us when we speak and speak directly into the microphone.
Uh, Dr. Blake?
Superintendent. I'm trying to be, 59 minutes.
I think you can do it, Chubb.
I'll, I'll talk fast.
No, no. Please talk, please talk.
It's been a busy two weeks since our last meeting. Um, I had the opportunity to meet with several parents regarding concerns ranging from COVID issues to behavioral issues to a scheduling issue here at the high school. Um, I've been meeting with Cheryl to review financial information and ongoing work with the HR department. I attended a planning meeting last week for the North Shore Superintendent's. We actually have our first meeting of the year tomorrow over in Danvers. Uh, our professional development committee met to finalize the plans for our professional development day in October. We had an Ipswich Aware meeting last week, planning for the vigil that's actually taking place right now. I was over there earlier this afternoon, helping to set that up. North Shore Education Consortium Board Meeting was last week, and the Crest Collaborative Board Meeting was this week for the first meetings of the year. Budget Committee, Budget Subcommittee Meeting we had last week, which you'll hear more about later this evening. I met with the elementary math coaches to review program implementation at both schools, as well as discuss the benchmark testing that we're gonna be using this year. It's called STAR, STAR assessments. And those assessments will actually begin next week. Um, I meet with the new principals on a regular basis to assist in their transition. Kathy McMahon is also providing formal mentoring to them, and the leadership team has readily embraced them. They've actually been getting together after work, um, at least once a week, going out together, so it's great to see. Uh, the end of last week, I was out at a, at a wedding out of town, so I wasn't here Thursday or Friday. We're working on the submission of the SIR3 grant. That application was actually, workbook was, was done today, working with the administrators, the facilities director, Tracy and Cheryl, on identifying the needs of the district and how that money can be best spent. As you know, we did the survey that went out to, to the community and staff two weeks ago now, I think. I reviewed the MCAS data with, with Tracy, and I'll share more about that a little bit later. Also working on rolling out the new Alice Training Suite with the company. Uh, you know, that's our intruder training that we do every year with the staff. They have a whole suite of opportunities that they've developed over the last couple of years for our staff, so working on getting that all squared away and ready to, to roll out. Our leadership team meeting reintroduced the HR department to the team. We also spent time discussing the influx of English language learners into the district. Professional Development Day, the SIR3 funding, and some staffing issues that are ongoing, as in, we can't get staff. We have a few open slots still that we're having a difficult time filling. This year, we have a online, we're gonna be working as a, as an admin team on what they call OPCTIC, and so it has to do with our professional development, has to do professional development for the administrators around the educator evaluation system, so we're gonna be working with that, so I introduced that at the meeting as well. Communication Subcommittee met this past week and organized their goals and schedules for the newsletters and outreach. The edeval committee that's made up of teachers and administrators met to discuss the process for this year and to schedule their initial discussions at the schools. And our leadership team meeting next week is gonna be focused on all of the required edeval modules, the forms, and the process, so that all the administrators are all on the same page. I attended a webinar on ELL reporting this morning. Um, I've taken ELL, English Language Learner, the program off of Bev's plate for this year. She's dealing with some staffing issues and several difficult cases, so, um, given the, the influx of students and the work that I did last year, I thought it best that I take over working with them for this year, especially in light of the new, the new staff members. We have two out of the three that are, that are new to us. They both came from Lawrence, and they have some great experience and background, but there's considerable work to do here. Tony Marino introduced me to Ken Reel, the CEO of the Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce, to explore partnership opportunities. Jonathan Mitchell, Justine May, and I are participating in a meeting with him next Friday with other school personnel from around Cape Anne. Tomorrow morning is my first coffee with the superintendent from 8:30 to 9:30 at Zumies. Umech has been, has been a very generous host, so looking to see who comes out tomorrow to, to chat. And then I'll be, as I said at the last meeting, I'll be moving them around. Some will be in the afternoon, some will be in the morning, and I anticipate that they'll be at different locations around town as well. That's it.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Blake?
Um, you really could have, I'll put, back, oh, okay. We did get your email this afternoon, and it might be a good time to tell the public how we're doing our case loads.
Oh, for Vex? Oh, for, oh, okay. Yep. So, um, yeah, so the first week of school, we had two cases. We had one at Doian and one at the high school. Last week, we had three, a total of five cases, three at the middle school and two at Winthrop, and this week I didn't have any to report. So, um, this year, the numbers, the, the reporting is a little bit wonky, so, um, if we get any cases between now and Friday, my Friday message would be different than what I reported to the state, because the state goes, I have to report by four o'clock on Wednesday afternoon, and they publish it on, on Thursday, so it's essentially from Wednesday afternoon at four till the following week, so.
That actually played out two weeks ago, I think. We had a different number on Friday.
Yeah, yeah, probably, probably. So, so no cases to report. We've had, we've had a number of kids out under quarantine, following the protocols that we have in place, parents who have been testing positive. Kids have been tested and/or, you know, gone through the quarantine timeframe, but they've all come back, knock on wood, this week negative, so hopefully that will continue. Um, in terms of vaccination rates, we have about 97% of our staff members are fully vaccinated, the ones that, that reported to us. We have other staff members who are unable medically to, to receive the vaccine at this point, and we do have a few staff members who have just, um, made the decision not to get vaccinated. So, as you know, we, we are not in, in position right now of mandating any of the vaccinations. As far as the students go, um, our data in-house is, is trickling in. It's been in my message weekly for the last three weeks, just for parents to send in the vaccination information, as they do with any of their other childhood vaccinations. But according to the state data, we have 70% of our 12 to 15-year-olds vaccinated, fully vaccinated, and 83 of our 16 to 19-year-olds that are fully vaccinated. Those numbers don't take into, and that's just kids that reported living in Ipswich at the state level. So that doesn't take into consideration any of our choice students that are, that are coming in, tuition-in kids, and it doesn't take into account any of the, the graduates. So you're 18 or 19 when you graduate high school, so those kids are still in this, considered in this, in this number, so it's probably actually a little bit lower than that.
So, Chubb, the, or Brian, the governor of the DESE said that if 80% of educators were vaccinated and 80% of students in a building were vaccinated, that you could allow vaccinated students to not, or, and teachers to not wear masks. Where do we stand on those numbers? Who's collecting those numbers? How does that get reported to the state? And how does the state consider that on a community-by-community basis? I understand right now the state has a mask mandate for all schools in place, but that can be individualized after October 1st. We're gonna be October 1st or after, after our next meeting, so I don't know what, how they're applying that.
Yep. Great, great question. Um, I know that the commissioner met with the leadership of MASs today, the school superintendents. We haven't received any word as to how that meeting went. I know that the commissioner was looking for some data from us earlier in the week so that he could share it with the governor's office, but we haven't heard anything definitively on what, what was gonna happen. I think everyone's just been waiting to see how many, you know, what the cases look like and whether we're seeing an increase or a decrease in, in the number of cases. And then we'll have some decision points, obviously, if, you know, I don't, well, we know we're not gonna get to 80% at either of the elementary schools.
Understood.
The question will be this building and whether it's considered, and I asked the question, I still haven't gotten an answer, whether this building is considered one building or two, because we know that we, the sixth graders aren't old enough to receive the vaccine at this point, so, um, and not knowing completely what our data looks like in-house and being able to discern what the numbers actually are at the high school level.
So, so the follow-up question is, are we going to ever have the information or the data to identify which students haven't been vaccinated and ask if they will be vaccinated? For example, we have state generalized data, right? And some parents are sending in vaccination cards for the students who've been vaccinated, but there's a gap between those. And so is that our responsibility to collect that information? Is that the state's responsibility to collect that information? And to what extent do we pursue the next steps of asking them to be vaccinated?
Yeah, yeah. Again, I think it's, the, the state isn't gonna collect the data. I think we're doing the best we can at this point to, to get the data in, and I, you know, if, the, at the end of the day, we may have to start making phone calls.
Right.
And calling individual parents and saying, hey, you know, but again, the parents don't have to necessarily tell us, and I'm sure there'll be a number that will decide that either they don't wanna tell us or they aren't necessarily truthful, so that they don't have to wear a mask.
So, from an administrative standpoint, does that mean that, are we gonna pursue that or are we not gonna pursue it? Because October 1st is when the state said they-
It's next Friday. What's next Friday? It's a week from tomorrow. Yep.
So it's, I don't know if we're gonna do it or not, or we're just gonna sit back and just not do anything and just let it go?
Yep.
And so that's the question. It'd be interesting to know, and it would be helpful for parents to understand that we're counting and we're looking for it. I know you're putting it in your weekly announcement, but I don't know what yield you've got.
Yeah, definitively, definitively, I don't, I don't know what we're gonna do next Fri-, or after next Friday, right now. My inclination is that I'm not in a hurry to get rid of the masks.
Right. But see, I see it as, as a tool. A tool to help inform people.
Right.
And to help them get vaccinated, or connect them to services that can vaccinate, or to connect them to information. So it's more than just, you know, a way to get kids out of masks, which is the only way to get kids out of masks, right? It's also a tool for us to help talk to people.
Yep.
And, and I think the state gave us that tool. And if we use it, we use it. If we don't use it, we're just wait, sitting around and wear masks the rest of the year, which is fine.
Yep.
But it's also an opportunity to educate.
What is our plan right now for kids at home in quarantine, since we aren't doing the hybrid?
Yep. So there is no remote learning model as of, as of right now. You know, there's no provision for it, either by the state or in our local MOU. Teachers are still responsible for providing educational opportunities for students in their classes, and they, they have the, they have the opportunity to do it as they see fit. We've had situations in classes where teaching teams have decided that they, they wanna have a, a student who was on quarantine zoom in, as we did last year, because it's actually easier for them in a, in a particular grade level. This was in the, in the, in the middle school. We have other grades that they just, the, the teachers have, have decided that they're gonna wait till the student comes back to make up work, and then we have other ones that are, um, you know, allowing students to, to have the work while they're in quarantine.
So, um, and just educate me on this. So if a student's in quarantine, it's for up to two weeks of school potentially? What are we doing about absences and how is that gonna impact potentially moving on and graduation rates and that type of thing?
So, at this point, the, the state is not issuing accountability data? So, and we, we see that from, from last year as well. So, um, while the absences are being recorded, we're not gonna be held, we've been told we're not gonna be held accountable for that. And so, you know, at the, at, in particular, at the high school level, because of students earning credits, et cetera, they, they have the opportunity to make up the work and then, and have conferences with the administration to, to see, you know, what the reasoning was. Was it quarant-, was it because of quarantine or is it, you know, are there other issues that the student's dealing with? And then they have the opportunity to make up the grade in the next quarter. So there are ample opportunities there.
Thank you.
Aren't we quarantining, aren't we quarantining a lot less because of the test-and-stay model?
We are, depending on, depending on the protocol that the student falls into. I mean, there's a number of different protocols, so if, if, there's one protocol, if they're, if they're symptomatic versus asymptomatic, where they were, you know, is it, is it apparent? And are they able to isolate and quarantine away from the parent? Most of the issues that we've had this year have been cases where the COVID is in the home and the kids aren't able to quarantine away from their parents. And so those kids have been out.
Have the longer quarantine.
Have the longer quarantine, yeah, yeah.
Just, sorry. Just for clarification, is the 80% mark, is that across the district, teachers and students, or is that within each school?
So it, it's 80% of, by school, but what's not clear is, does this building count as one building or two? Because they're housed under the same roof, we have common areas and such, so we're, so that's, that's the question, and it's, it's 80% of staff and 80% of students.
Okay. Thank you.
So we may well make the threshold for the high school.
We could. Yep.
Do you have a problem with sixth graders hitting that threshold?
Well, it doesn't sound like just sixth graders. It sounds like all 12 through 15s.
Can I ask a question if we're moving on from COVID questions about your, is it hiring positions that you're seeking?
Yep. So, um, we're, we're still in need of, of a special education case manager at the Doian As of Tuesday, I think we were still looking for a speech assistant here at the high school. I believe that was, that's what it was. And I know that they were looking for some additional lunch positions. So, variety of positions.
Understood, understood. Um, we, I, I don't know, we put that which forum, we had a discussion about the large kindergarten classes, we can explain, uh, we did the email, our new email segment, you know, kindergarten teacher. And, um-
If someone would care to forward that to me, I'd love to see it.
Okay. Sorry, you weren't on that list? I just assumed. There it is. So anyways, we all recommend the large kindergarten classes.
Yes.
And, um, the large, I, I heard my oldest daughter, girls' class, we had 23 to 24 back to micro and kindergarten, and now we're approaching that level. So, do you have, are there more than one teachers in the room? Or, sorry.
Are there more than one teachers in the room, teacher, in, in each room?
I believe there are. The, the main concern at this point is the Winthrop School, where they practice the co-teaching model, more so than, than at Doian. We are keeping an eye on it. We have been, I've had several conversations with, with the principal around the, the numbers in the classes. At this point, we're, we're not recommending, based on the, the budget Subcommittee discussion, we're not recommending splitting it out into another section. I don't think it makes sense at this point, you know, three weeks into the year. If we have to add some additional supports to, you know, one or two of the classrooms that have the higher numbers, then, then we can certainly consider that.
Now, my follow-up question, though, is, can we use any of our SIR funding for that?
Yes, potentially.
That's true. That's my, that's my long wait.
But then it's a short-term hire, right?
It is.
Like a two-year hire?
Yep.
That's my understanding.
Are we looking at adding a section at Winthrop next year?
I'm sorry.
Are we looking at adding a section? Are we starting to think about that for the first grade next year?
It's, it's part of the discussion. We have to, you know, we're, we're trying to keep an eye on, on the numbers and the move-ins. I'm gonna talk a little bit. We're seeing a significant influx of, of students in, in the Winthrop District, if you will, Winthrop area. Over the last couple of weeks and, you know, over the summer, we were seeing a significant increase from, you know, in, in the Doian numbers because of the Mile Lane and Linebrook Road project. So, you know, there's, it, I, I wish I had that crystal ball, you know? As, as I've said in, in other meetings, the school committee was- You know, as, as I've said in, in other meetings, the school committee was, was, and the FinCom were pushing-
So what did you say?
-to eliminate a section of kindergarten at Winthrop last year. And, and I pushed back and said no, and, and so here we are, looking at class sizes that are at the-
So, so there is some institutional knowledge on this question. We've had a number of episodes over my 20-year tenure where we've had 23, 24, up to 27 or 28 kids in kindergarten. And if those numbers persisted, we split out another section for first grade. And so we historically have tolerated higher numbers in kindergarten than first and second grade for a variety of reasons, but a lot of it was budgeting, sometimes classroom space. But generally, the educational content required in first grade really requires a smaller class size compared to kindergarten, which historically has not required a smaller class size. And we've almost always had supporting educators in kindergartens, where we haven't always had them in first grade, so it also plays a role. So we almost always had TAs or second teachers in kindergarten classrooms that we may not have had in first grade. So that made for more opportunities to keep a higher number in kindergarten in the past, so we've been able to sustain it.
It sounds like the ELL population in Winthrop too is also increasing significantly. Do we have plans to do additional hires to support that?
Already in the works, because the numbers have increased significantly. So just by way of comparison, in 2019, we had 43 ELL students district-wide. In this year, right now, we're up to 64. We, we have seen a significant increase just in the last two weeks. In particular at, in particular at Winthrop, but they, some of them have older siblings as well. And so Amy Sullivan and I have had several conversations with Lisa and with the other two new ELL teachers. And I advertised, I think we posted yesterday or today, for a .5 ELL teacher for this year, just to, to help get us through. So many of the students that were, that are coming in are newcomers and don't necessarily have formal, any formal schooling in some cases. And so there's, there's significant needs there that we're, that we're looking to target. And you'll see that in my goals when we, when we get there.
Can I have one more question, do you want to look at the field?
Not a problem.
And look at the field, and then we can add other stuff here.
Thank you. I'll, I'll take some time and read this later. I apologize for not-
No, well, you didn't have it. Okay. Let's pull out an administrative report. Thank you.
You get to keep going.
You do. They'll work back to you for student assessment, district ranking.
If I can wake up my computer here.
And the rod, uh, is that right?
Yep. So, um, so there were, there were a couple of questions slash comments just about, about student assessment data, the MCAS primarily, as well as the Boston Magazine article that came out last week or two weeks ago. And so I wasn't, because of the short notice, I wasn't sure what, what I was going to be able to prepare for, for tonight. But I do have some, some information to share and, and, you know, obviously there's more work to be done. DESI released the MCAS scores this, this past week. I'm sure you've heard, and given the past year in the context of the pandemic, the results from across the Commonwealth are down quite a bit from previous years. I think they said 15%. In particular, grades three through eight, there's a decrease in the overall number of students earning meet expectations and exceeding expectations, especially in grade eight. The exception to the assessment was in grade 10. Their results, especially for English Language Arts, were, were above the 2019 results, average results. The 10th grade test, interestingly enough, was the only MCAS test that was given last year that, that students completed in full. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that and just what, what that potentially means in a minute. The other, the other grades all, instead of having two sections of each assessment, they only completed one. And it was at random which one the students received. So, so the MCAS was, basically the kids took what amounted to about half of it in, in grades three through eight. Took about half of it, and it was random, random assignment to which one they got. And not only was it only half, but even those testing sessions were, were condensed. Here in Ipswich, the, the schools, the scores all followed the state pattern. There's a few reasons why. One is the context of the 21 MCAS testing itself. Students spent a year and a half in combinations of remote, hybrid, and in-person learning. And the pace at which students learned about and met the state standards, of course, needed to be adjusted. There was no MCAS testing at all in 2020 as a result of the pandemic. Another reason for the lower scores is the testing itself. As I said, instead of the usual two sessions for students in grades three through eight, they were randomly assigned just one session in, in 2021. So students didn't have the full set of testing and standards to show what they learned and, and what they're able to do. And as, as a result of that learning, students in grades three through eight may in fact have been tested on standards that they hadn't even reached yet in the curriculum. Because the, the grades three to eight tests were much shorter, just one randomly chosen session instead of two, the precision of the results of the tests were affected. In fact, the state needed to use a new calculation in order to create the yearly student growth percentiles that they publish, saying that the usual way of creating SGP's, or student growth percentiles, just didn't make sense. Massachusetts is not issuing accountability results this year and is warned against comparing one school district's MCAS scores to another because there was so much variety in the part, in the participation rates among students. With remote students not being able, they were being able to test remotely or at, or in school. Or, or hybrid students taking the test on their in-person days. Whole grades of students coming in to take the test all at once. There were, there were just, there was no standardization of how the, the assessments were administered statewide. As a result, DESI says that the MCAS scores between districts can't even be compared. The MCAS reports that parents and guardians receive for their children will look differently this year too because of the great differences between the 21 MCAS results and those from other recent years. We always share discussions of MCAS, that it's just, you know, one of the ways that we, that students in our district show what they know and are able to do. As a district, we've never advocated for MCAS as the one and only method of checking in on students' learning. And we'll continue to, to look at different benchmarks along the way. We're actually starting the, a new benchmark assessment, the STAR assessment in math this next week. And then we have a, a number of other assessments that we're utilizing locally for English Language Arts. Certainly, we're, we're taking a closer look at the scores. And if the school committee would like, we can have Tracy come in and, and do a, you know, a presentation and look closer at the, at the numbers themselves.
You're not ready for Tracy to do that for a bit. I mean, they're, they're released this week.
Yeah, right.
Do you think in any way those scores reflect how we handled the pandemic in terms of educating students? Or is it just students aren't prepared for that kind of type of test?
I, I think it's, I think it's a combination of factors. I, I, I think that there perhaps is some degree of, of learning loss. Although, you know, I, I think in our situation, we, we did very well covering the, the bulk of the curriculum. But again, we had, we had a number of students that were taking it, you know, that, that were remote, that either had to come in or take it remotely. We had, you know, just the, the testing sessions themselves, things that we can control on our end, we could control. But yet, you know, when, when students are only taking half the assessment to begin with, you know, those types of things we had no control over.
And do you feel like there's a differentiation between grades? For example, high school students were able to do it, tolerate it better because they're more prepared for remote learning, whereas a lower elementary school student may have more difficulty with the electronic format and the electronic way it's done? I just don't know if, if that informs anything for us.
I don't know the answer to that, but what I can tell you is that the, the grade 10 assessments were the only assessments that, that was a complete test. So, and, and those scores were up.
Yeah, I just wonder if there's anything, you know, it's, I've always favored test and remediate. I've always wondered how, what we can learn from the tests-
Yep.
-about our kids and about our teachers-
Yep.
-and about our district. And I know they say, "Don't compare, don't compare, don't compare," but it's nice to know how we as a district handled COVID versus other districts and how we failed or supported our children during the COVID. The, the only way is objective tests-
Right.
-on the fact that they're well-adjusted and tolerant.
I, I think what's going to be more-
I think it has value, maybe more value this year than other years.
If, if it were, if it were a complete assessment, I, I think that would be a valid, a more valid statement. But if, if you're, if you're only testing on, if you only have one session of the test, and instead of the, the two that you would normally take, it may be on standards that you haven't seen yet. You know, I just, I, I think if it were, if, if, if three through 10, three through eight and 10, all took a complete assessment, then I think there would be more validity to it. And if everybody, if everybody took it in the same fashion. But that just wasn't, wasn't the case.
So generally, you think we'll learn more in a year?
I, I think, I, I think we're going to learn more this year when we institute the benchmark assessments that we're, that, you know, we, we assess today, we have results tomorrow morning. You know, that's going to be more valuable information on how, how students are performing and, and where the gaps are.
Yeah, because I, I can already tell you that for the last year and a half, kids really haven't had the intensity of pace for testing that they had in the past. And now it's back. And it's a rude awakening for kids. They're not, they're not ready for three tests in a day because they haven't had six or seven classes at once, they've only had three. And they're not ready for, you know, the fast pace of classes so much. It was paced down last year, for a lot of reasons, obviously. But, so it's going to be a transition for kids too. And they're, they're embracing it, but it's hard work.
We're seeing, I'm seeing in my brain exactly that.
So we're going to continue to look at them. They're not going on the shelf. Like I said, we just got them this week, so... We'll dig in and see if there's, you know, what other valuable information there is, so.
Do we have interest in having Tracy come?
I do.
I would like to hear her.
I would too.
Okay.
Institutional knowledge, anytime you get Tracy to come is good.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. All right, we'll get that, we'll get that.
Let's give her a chance to digest, because now the experience might be leading that.
We'll get, we'll get, we'll get her scheduled.
Now, Dr. Blake, you mentioned also the Boston Magazine list.
Yep, I was going to go there next.
That was a slight reduction.
Yep, I'm going to go there next. So the, again, Boston Magazine came out, I don't see a date on it, but it was in, within the neck, the last couple of weeks. And I think historically, we're, we're, we perform in the, right, right in the same area, in the, in the 40s, I think. We're at 39 this year. And again, we, we haven't had the time to, to really dig in and take a look. You know, Jonathan started to put together a spreadsheet. You know, with, with any of these, with any of these surveys, we have to look at, you know, all the parameters and see how the, the rankings are done and, you know, how, how scientific it actually is. Is it based purely on, on numbers, or is it perceptions as well? And, and so we're, we're just starting to, to gather that information. You know, we're reaching out to the publisher of, of the, of the information just to, to see what the rationale was behind it. You know, for example, you know, how, how does, how does the average class size weigh in? What, what are the metrics behind all of that? You know, you know, with this, this student-teacher ratio. I can't manipulate this for some reason. You know, it looks at, at test scores. We're also, one of the, one of the questions that came to mind for John was what's, you know, looking at the numbers and looking at the, the schools that are the top schools, what is the correlation between the rankings and median household income? And so that's one of the parameters that he started to look at. And there is a, a pretty strong correlation between median income-
These are not socio-economically diverse communities, generally speaking, that score-
What's that?
They're not socio-economically diverse communities that score at the high end of this thing. It's a numbers game.
Yeah.
Interestingly, we scored really well on class size and student-to-teacher ratio. That carried us.
Yep.
Big time.
Right, right. So, you know, we're, we're, we're starting to take a look at that. And, you know, as, as John said, you know, it, it could be something as simple as increasing the, the participation rate in AP classes. And it could, it literally could be that, something that simple. Or, you know, something to do with, you know, increasing the, you know, a higher SAT score. Or any one of these, any one of these parameters. But it's interesting because how, how does it all shake out at the end of the day? Because we score very, if you look at individual pieces and start playing with the data, we score very well, or rank very well in some areas, and then not so well in others, and how does that all balance out? So we're, we're, we're taking a, a closer look at it because we've been asked, you know.
I will point out that we scored ahead of Hamilton Witten this year.
Our high school did.
High school did.
Not here. Hamilton Witten. Ipswich, 46.
Was that this year or last?
That's this year.
Well, maybe that was last year.
You have to be careful about the-
He's just giving-
It's all I care about.
No, no, no.
I, I was nudging-
That was a personal nut.
She's a general.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Was, was.
Was.
So, so we, I, I made the mistake of clicking on one of these boxes at the top and it changed the whole rank order. And I'm like, "Yeah, we did fine." But you have to be careful about how, what button you push when you're-
There's also a paywall if you click too many times. I think you get shut out of it, so I can't look at it.
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly. And you know what, that's probably why I can't scroll over anymore on this computer. So, yeah, we're, we're taking a look at it. You know, just, just as an aside, I always, I'm always a little bit skeptical of, of these types of surveys. I had an experience many years ago with another survey company that was just hammering the district that, that I was in. And it was, we were performing very well in all categories, but come to find out, they had a parent input piece. And we had a group of vocal parents and disgruntled parents who were going in and filling out these parent surveys that were just killing us, killing us. And there was no, no rhyme or reason to it, but they could go on and, and as many times as they want. So it was, it was very strange. So since that time- it was very strange. So since that time, I'm always a little bit skeptical of how, you know, what the methodology is behind these. So, and to what end? So that we can say that we're ahead of X school? Doesn't, you know, it's about our kids and what our kids are, need and are getting, so.
Well, it's good to have an answer. Parents look at it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yep, yep.
It's good to see, you know, whatever the criteria is.
Right.
The region and how things shake out.
I think John said we were like number five in the Cape Ann, out of the Cape Ann League Schools, something along those lines. So, but yeah, so we're, we'll continue to dig in again. That was a question that was asked this week, so limited in time. And if there's specific questions that folks have, please let me know and I can make sure that we have those answers.
Okay, so we look forward to Tracy's presentation in a meeting.
Yep. That might, that might be a good opportunity to get, if, if not the same meeting, have John and Leanne here as well.
Here.
Who's that?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Blake. Is there anything else on district ranking and student assessment?
That is it.
Okay, on, on, Cheryl? A finance update?
Sure, thank you. Included in your information is the yearly budget report through September. And all of the manual payroll conferences have been recorded at this point. So we'll see those numbers reflect through the budget report. So we're at 81.1% of the budget, which is fairly close to where we were last year at this point. Have any other questions?
And I have to say, before you, before folks jump in with questions, Cheryl's been working nonstop on the end of year report. That's always a, it's a significant, significantly heavy lift for, for the finance department, and it's done.
It is done. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great.
Yes.
So Cheryl, historically, schools have encumbered differently. That is, some schools would aggressively encumber early and other schools would not encumber so much. Are you seeing any patterns where they're encumbering a lot more of their money in one school than another, or not really?
No, and I mean, the payroll conference is-
I don't know how to respond.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Shouldn't know, it's not.
Yeah.
The payroll conferences specifically are not even in our office. And it is purely based on our staff, I guess.
So it's a staff thing?
It's, yeah, bottom line, the staff that you hired, the, the district has hired at this point. And so, you know, that's not at a school level. What we do at a school level would be, you know, more of like supplies, like encumbering money for, for those types of things. You know, overall, I haven't really seen, you know, one school being overly aggressive when it comes to that.
Okay.
There's not a lot of large blank, not all of the blank, large kind of business purchase orders out there. They're pretty detailed and, so, no, I want, I want to-
Okay.
So financial data for me is, is, it's, budgets subcommittee can read it like a novel. I have to, I have to, it's much harder for me. And so I, do you have any areas in our budget that, that you, you all wording likes very flat?
Um, I mean, so overall, no. I mean, that, you know, on the bottom line, it's the budget, the financial sheet, there are some lines, you know, deep little lines in the budget that we have already recognized a lot of percent now around. And some of that is, you know, maybe they, instead of hiring, that's our X, Y, Z position, they're contracting some of that out. So it's really just shipping into the line. The only area I would say where I know will have to draw upon, comes up budget savings, is in our long-term subs. We have a lot of individuals that are out this year for a longer period of time. And so the budget, I know that I'm not there, but it, you have it for you.
And I hate to sound like a broken record, but, but I'm sure the first place you can look, I hope you look, are S R 3.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, right after the door.
And in fact, actually, we need the summer program. It's probably a long time, so apologies, but.
Can you just speak up a little bit?
Sorry. Sure. The summer program, we did go over budget for that. And that was because there was more need there. And so we already looked, actually used S R 2 funding to ship those costs.
Yeah, wherever possible.
Yep, so the primary.
Great, thank you. That's my every day here.
My highs are going, my ears are going.
I know.
So one of, one of, just along, along with the, the budget discussion though, I, I want to, I want to be careful that we, we have an appropriated budget. And so we're, we're utilizing the appropriated budget as, as, as we should be. And, and we're fortunate that last year and this year and next year, we have the, the S R 2 and the S R 3 funds to support some of the additional positions that we've, that we're hiring, some of the additional needs that we have in terms of supplies and materials and, and things like that. But, so it, it is a balancing act to make sure that we are, are securing and utilizing the budget appropriately. Because we also have, you know, when we look at special needs areas, for example, we have maintenance of effort that we have to maintain in our budget because we get, we get dinged for that if we don't have maintenance, if we don't show maintenance of effort. So it is a balancing act as far as how we're utilizing the S R 2 and S R 3 funds. And the S R 3 funds in particular, the, the guardrails that they put up around the use of S R 3 funds have been much more strict than they were for S R 1 and 2. So we've got to, not, not jump through additional hoops, but we just have to be very careful about meeting the criteria for, for utilizing that money.
And if I just, I mean, I'm going to point out, Dr. Blake, that S, that S R 3 does not count towards our maintenance of effort. So it is important that, at this point, it's a balancing act. Careful as far as the special comes to special, that how much we're shifting to S R. Because hopefully we get ourselves in trouble if we ship too much of those costs to S R 17, it will count towards our maintenance of effort.
And just for people watching who might not know what maintenance of effort is?
It's a required level of funding that we must spend every year on specialized students. And it looks at what you spent last year. And you have to spend equal or above that. They will take into account if we've had a, like a drop in your student population. So for some reason, you know, our special education students went from 150. When, when I filed the report, there are some initial steps I believe to say it's because of that's the drop in students. But that's there that that was happening. And so maintenance of effort is we have to make, we have to ensure we're spending the equal dollars or more on special education students.
And I think one of the reasons for that, just for people's knowledge, is certain categories of monies have to be spent in the calendar year. Certain other ones can be reserved for future use. For example, our special education reserve or, and our other budgetary reserve funds. So it's categorization, but it's also pandemic related, I expect. And so it's important that she stays on top of that for all of our work.
Thank you. Is there anything else, budget related or finance related? Thank you, Cheryl.
Just for the record, you didn't beat the, you didn't beat the under an hour.
I know. I was going to say, I didn't see you watching the clock. That's why I was just telling Greg, that's beside.
We went off the rails about 7:20.
We did, we did. Well, we record today.
Hold up, I can do it.
Okay, all right. Is everyone in favor of all the goals? I guess I'd like to take this opportunity to, we have a new agenda format. And thank you, Laura, very much for this. And it also is, with your request, Dr. Flynn, keeps information discussion and action.
Oh, nice. Yeah, I saw the agendas changed a little bit.
Yeah.
Format wise too.
Yeah, single page.
Very neat.
Thank you, Laura. All right. School committee goals. I'd really like to thank Kate and Pop for, for fleshing out our goals and putting them in better form. And everyone's had a chance to, to read them, I hope, over the couple of days. And I'm opening the floor to some comments. We've run, one, one, I've heard about milestones in our goals. And I think many milestones we create in those, and I kept, so I just got a question of yours before I left me. And I've also known, we have heard Dr. Blake's presentation on how they fold, they're merged with a certain kind of thing. But one milestone, and I'm going to, to end up during the pledge presentation on the override, is the, is the, there is, the milestone set in the override campaign will, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The milestones set in the override campaign will be community milestones, the override committee's milestones, and will be helping. So we'll talk about that when we discuss override, but, but a part of this meeting. But does anyone have any, would anyone like to start a discussion on the goals that we have before us and have any comments?
I mean, I can just start with kind of my process. I mean, I took, I took what we talked about at the retreat and, and tried to add some specifics and sort of measurables and, you know, flesh them out a little bit. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to make edits, answer questions.
I think they look good. I think the one thing that was missing, obviously, were the measurables that were there now. So I think we've all, we've all accounted for meeting and not meeting the goals. So it was good.
I'm trying to remember, did we talk at the, at the retreat about, about reviewing them quarterly? So that we don't come to the end of the year and go, oh, yeah.
We definitely review them mid-year, I think, normally. I mean, I remember that shortly after I started, we revisited them when I was new. So, but I'm up for quarterly. I mean, I think it's, it's nice that, and the, because they're sort of broken out by subcommittee, at least, you know, some of them, they could be revisited in subcommittee meetings. You know, school facilities, vision 20, 30, budget communications. It's just that first one is sort of our, you know, doesn't fall into a subcommittee, but it's pretty overarching.
It doesn't have to be by default.
Years past is that the, the goals that were, that were specific to the subcommittees, that was sort of what the focus point of the subcommittee meeting was, were, is to look at those goals and review them.
Yeah, remember, this is about a goals cascade. So you've got school committee goals, superintendent administrative goals, and the school committee should be addressing their goals through their subcommittees. So it should always have some structure like that. And there should be a timing on these to some extent, obviously by the end of the year. But some things will be accomplished earlier than others.
I really appreciate that, I guess, that the firm, I guess, dates in here. And it's, I think, going to really help in keeping us on task to have benchmarks where, you know, we can look back and say, wow, we really whiffed on that one. And, you know, and that we should light a fire. So I think, you know, to everybody who worked on fleshing these out, I think having those, those initiatives and having measurable milestones and having firm target dates is really going to help us. And I'm glad that we've gotten there.
And by the way, this is a great job of creating goals.
Thank you, Kate. Division 20, 30. And then, did she pass her third?
I just gave her a comment.
So who's fourth, 21, 22 student goals?
Second.
Discussion. Brian, how do you, how do these reflect in your goals?
I'm going to do my goals next.
Okay. So.
Have they cascaded?
You should, you should think about how these relate. That's all. Because we're going to judge you based on how you perform on your goals. But to some extent, we need to judge ourselves too. So it's, it's important.
Are your goals, are they in the chat?
They are. In my, are, is there a vote?
There's a motion and a second. That was discussion.
And a second by Emily. All right, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the school committee goals for 21, 22. That's unanimous. Thank you.
So my goals, I, I did change up my goals a little bit. And mine go by the standards that-
They're not in the column.
They are, they're two.
Where are they? Grand superintendent. Yes, they are.
Hold on, let me, I'll recheck.
Chuck is in, Laura is in.
Have they shared with everybody or just?
All folks are getting here, getting to them. I did change mine up a little bit. As you know, mine, while they tie to the school committee goals, they're also based on the standards for the superintendent evaluation process, the roast documents. So my goals are, have to be targeted in, in specific areas. Folks there yet?
Yeah.
So the first goal is 1A, standards on A around curriculum. The goal is to unpack and develop the ELL curriculum. I was going to continue looking at the math curriculum. I think, given the situation that we're in, I felt, makes this-
Time was in here.
So the, the goal is to unpack and develop the ELL curriculum and program district wide in light of the new staffing and increase in populations. The action items are to meet regularly. And that's already started biweekly in September and October, then monthly thereafter with the EL staff. In conjunction with the staff, develop an immediate list of curriculum needs. Because we've got new staff members and there were certain things that they were looking to, to purchase. Through the compass committee, this is the year to unpack and review the long-term curriculum needs for the EL population as part of the, the cascading, good night.
Good night, Carol. Thank you.
As part of the cascading of the, the curriculum review cycle, English, ELL program is, is up this year. Establish school and community events throughout the year to help integrate EL families into our schools. Working with the EL teachers to do that. I'm actually meeting with a parent- Working with the, the EL teachers to do that, I'm actually meeting with, um, a parent in town tomorrow morning after my coffee hour um, to start that work and see how we can help in particular this, um, the, the most recent increase that we're seeing in, in the Winthrop area. Um, many of them are coming from Brazil and speak Portuguese, and so, um, we wanna see what we can do to, to help facilitate their integration into, into Ipswich. Um, and then by the end of the year, publish a revised EL program guide for our district use, um, with new staff members. Uh, two of the new staff members, as I mentioned earlier, came from Lawrence, so they have some definitive ideas on what we can be doing better and differently. Um, Ipswich, it's interesting, Ipswich is still considered a low incidence community, and so, um, it's very different for them here because in, in Lawrence, they had entire classes full of EL students that, and that was a scheduled class for them. Um, where with being a low incidence district, uh, we're having to, to do things a little bit differently with, with our EL population, so. Um, so that's the first goal. Um, second goal is around, uh, management and operations and the environment. Um, ensure successful integration of the new elementary administrators into the Ipswich public schools. Um, provide formal mentoring support for the new administrators, that is already happening. Um, introduce both principals to the rotary and other community groups. I know tomorrow morning, uh, they're both meeting with Chris Belavacqua from the Y, uh, to, uh, just a meet and greet and also to talk about the, uh, kindergarten swim program that we started, uh, two years ago now. Um, I wanna attend at least three faculty meetings throughout the year in each of the buildings, uh, to, and then work with, with the administrators after that. Um, and do walkthroughs with them, and also attend at least three school council meetings in each building. Um, and then utilizing the optik, uh, program and teach point, work with the administrators to ensure understanding of the educator evaluation process here in Ipswich. And the second goal underneath that would be to facilitate, uh, the comprehensive district accountability review by the Office of District Reviews and Monitoring, uh, with DESI. Um, I, I don't know what that's gonna look like, but certainly once I get the schedule from DESI as far as what they're gonna be looking at, um, it, it's gonna require a significant amount of time and work, I anticipate, so, um, you know, I, I just put in here, prepare the documentation required, uh, and then coordinate the site visit, they'll be here for several days when they, whenever they do schedule. But we do know it's happening this year, I think we're one of 11 districts that are gonna be reviewed, so. Um, and then, uh, the third goal around family and community engagement. Uh, there's two goals there, providing opportunities for unifying the elementary school community around the elementary ed plan as well as the vision 2030 documents. Um, I've already established expectations of collaboration between the two schools and the two principals. Um, I facilitate meetings biweekly between the two principals to discuss curriculum and community and staffing issues. Um, it's nice to, to see them in each other's buildings or, or in the central office together for those meetings. Uh, meet with both principals specifically to discuss the elementary ed plan and what it looks like in each building. They, we haven't, uh, had time to, to do that yet. And then develop a timeline in conjunction with the school committee subcommittee for the dissemination of the vision 2030 documents. Then the second piece to that is facilitating the submission of the new SOI to the MSBA in 2022. Um, I need to, uh, the action items there will be to establish a timeline for moving forward toward an SOI submission in the spring. So I've gotta date that back and, and sort of backfill what, what needs to happen when. Working with the school committee to facilitate community forums, listening sessions, et cetera. Provide leadership around the need for moving forward with the building project to include community messaging, videos, interviews, and social media posts, et cetera, and then write and revise the SOI document in conjunction with the school committee. And then the final goal is around professional culture, um, cultural proficiency. And the goal there is to actively lead the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, uh, established this year within the school district. It's an advisory group to help move from pockets of self-identified interest in those, those topics, uh, to district-wide learning practices. Um, in conjunction with the leadership team, establish the parameters for the committee by September 15th, uh, which we've done. Uh, solicit participation from the staff in each school and high school students with, with diverse backgrounds. And we're still, um, we're still looking for a few more students. I know that, that John was, was, uh, trying to help us get some more students on board with some diverse backgrounds. Um, and then set a schedule for the first meeting in October, um, and then report out monthly to the school committee on the activities, and that was something that Emily asked about, so we'll be doing that on a monthly basis as far as what comes before us and what's happening in the schools. And other than that, I'll try to run the district as best I can. During a pandemic.
Um, Jeff. Sorry, in light of, and again, I think this is much more fleshed out than what we saw before. But in light of what we, some of the issues that are facing our district that we talked about today in terms of teaching, teacher shortage, it seems like in certain areas, um, class size, ELL needs, um, and then I'm not sort of seeing anything about the special education population, um, which I think is interesting, particularly in a year coming off COVID where those needs are so great. I'm wondering if there's any way to sort of incorporate any of those things into some of these goals. Do they fall in here? Um, like, environment, to me, it's a lot about these new elementary school principals, which obviously is important, but I'm just thinking about the environment going on beyond that in the schools, in the elementary schools in particular. Is there a way to work some of that into these goals?
So, I, I, I think we can, but the, the, the purpose of these goals isn't to be all-inclusive. Um, in, in terms of, of the only things that I'm gonna be looking at or addressing this year. You know, I, I've said before, I, I could, I could check every one of these boxes and be a horrible superintendent. Or I could be a great superintendent and not do any of these, and if the district is still performing and, and, and functioning well. So it, they're, they're not, I, I guess, a few thoughts around it. Yes, we, we can try to work more into it. I don't know, I, I don't think that's the intent, is for it to be all-encompassing.
I guess maybe.
You know, I wanna be able to focus and, and be successful with, with what's here.
Right, no, and I understand there's a lot of like.
I mean, all of those other things are still gonna happen.
Right.
I mean, I, I still have to address and pay attention to the issue of kindergarten numbers, so.
Right.
Those things are gonna happen regardless.
What I'm thinking of is when it comes to the end of the year and we do an evaluation, it's on these things. Um, and it's, it's hard, I guess it's hard to, if we're not putting in needs we know the district has, things that you are in fact gonna be working on and moving the ball forward on, I, I would add them into the goals because those are benchmarks, measurable outcomes that you're going to be working on. I don't think it needs to be all-inclusive. Um, certainly there's no possible way to do that every year. I was just sort of surprised at the total lack of inclusion of any sort of special education mixed into anything. Um, so that just might be, um, you know, just something to think about if it, if it fits, and maybe this is a year that it doesn't. But given the COVID, um, coming off COVID and how much of an emphasis it is on closing the gap and bringing programs back, um, I would think it's an important thing to at least put out there. But I do hear what you're saying.
Cool.
He, he, generally speaking, the superintendent only puts three or four things, but it's not recommended he do more than that. He doesn't really have a goal for, specifically for the override, which we'll judge him on, whether it fails or doesn't. He doesn't have anything here about, um, bringing the schools back after COVID specifically.
So is there a lot that he expects?
But he's chosen that, he's, we're gonna judge him on for his, for his year. They're all worthy. I don't think there's anything that's not worthy this year. So in, in defense of these, I think these are worthy goals, but I think he's gonna be working on a whole lot more.
And when we write our record, when we write our reviews, we can write in anything we want, you know? And we often have.
No, and I know that, I'm just trying to, it seems more fair to have, have the standards out there, have what we're looking at out there. And to say, oh, and I was also judging you on, you know, something that wasn't in writing, that wasn't part of the stated goal, so I just, I, you know, thanks for the clarification, I just, it was just something I never thought of. And these get published on the district website, right, on your little tab?
Yep.
I mean, I think, I appreciate the effort you put into these, and I think I like that they're a lot more fleshed out and specific, so, uh, thank you. And I, I think the public will like to see, you know, a little more detail around, um, around some of the specifics on these, so.
And I, and I think what happens at the end of the year, he'll create a little binder, or electronic binder, that shows how he addressed every single one of these things. He's a, we'll really get a lot of detail on these issues, but again, we'll always judge him on the entirety of those.
And I see this evaluation as, as, as one piece. You know, if, if there, if there are issues that come up during the course of the year that, that need to be addressed or that I'm not addressing or, or that I'm, um, neglecting to address, what, you know, whatever we want, words we wanna use, then, then certainly I would, I would expect that the school committee would make me aware of it and not wait till.
Yeah.
The evaluation to, to ding me on it, right? You know, and that's, that's the, the relationship, right, right. I mean, that's the relationship that we should have, and, you know. And as I said, this is, these are sort of the, the goals that I'm choosing to, to, to focus on in part to meet the, to meet the letter of the law for, for the observation. I mean, that's why they're, that's why they're in, you know, standard 1A curriculum. I mean, there, there's that whole chart that we have to, to work with to pick what to focus on, and you're not, you're not supposed to focus on all 28 or 34 indicators every year. You pick and choose, you know, a, a, a couple to work on. Um, you know, and, and this isn't supposed to be, as I said, all-encompassing. I could, I could check these off and sit in my office and do nothing the rest of the year. Okay, today's, right, today's Tuesday, I have my, my, my ELL meeting. There's a lot more to running the district and, and, and working with the, with the teachers and the staff and the administrators than just what's, what's here.
Do we vote to accept these, Sarah?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Move to support the superintendent's goals.
Second.
Moved by, excuse me, second by, uh, is there any further discussion?
But I think big picture, they're worthy. ELL, completely necessary, completely worthy. DEI, completely necessary, completely worthy. We've got elementary principals and elementary programs that need to be brought up. That, that's 100% necessary, so these are, these are.
And you've got the heavy lift of, of assessment here as well.
Yeah, we've got a lot on our plate.
I remember, I remember Dennis doing that, uh, at the high school.
Well, the NEAS and C report, yeah.
That, that was.
And that was just the high school, this is the whole district.
No, no.
So there, there, there's lots to this, and, and lots of good that will come of it, which is equally important. We wanna set goals that will advance the district, these goals will advance the district, so I think they're important.
Okay, all those in favor, support? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I can, uh, for sure, I'm being a little bit.
Well, I can do my part and then Kate can.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. You can start.
There's another stretch.
This is in the, this is in the packet, though.
This is just, I'd like to thank Kate for this.
I think, I think this was shared.
This is the community outline of, uh, what everything has to be done for the override.
All right. And Kate is on the override committee, and it's passed.
So we had our budget subcommittee meeting earlier in the week, or the last?
I got that.
Last, last week. Um, and the main topic was around, uh, starting to discuss and put a framework together for the override. And, you know, we sort of struggled to, or we have struggled in the past, kinda come up with a number, what that number should look like. And that number is really driven by our, um, budget override calculator. And essentially what that calculator does is it models out, um, you know, how much of a shortfall we have on the budget each year based on the operating revenues that are, that are, um, appropriate operating revenues from the town, what our actual budget is, and that delta is essentially the shortfall. So, you know, obviously, we've been fortunate to have that stabilization fund to draw from. Sorry. The issue is that stabilization fund eventually runs out. The other issue is the delta between the operating revenues from the town and our budget gets bigger every year. You know, so our budget grows at about four and a quarter percent each year. Revenues from the town come to us at about 3.1%, so that, that, that spread just keeps getting bigger and bigger. Um, last year prior to, or sort of the first round of the budget that was developed, we estimated about a $1.9 million draw from the override, I'm sorry, from the stabilization fund, that was adjusted downward to about 1.6 and ultimately adjusted down to about 1.3, um, really due to the SFR funds that we received. So in a normal year, if this last year was a normal year, we would probably draw in the range of 1.8, 1.9 from stabilization. With that number increasing each year, it's easy to see how that exceeds 2 million, 2 and a half million, potentially 3 million down the road. We're fortunate now, we do have a nice cushion in our stabilization fund, enough to get us through probably one more year, uh, without additional funding. The problem we run into, though, is if we go one more year and that stabilization fund is drained, then we're looking at significant budget cuts across the board, probably, um, north of 2, 2 and a half million dollars from the budget once we run out of stabilization fund. So the thought was to go to the town, based on the schedule that was set forth in the town strategic plan, uh, in the spring of 2022, to ask for an override basically a year before we really need the funds, just to make sure that we did have, you know, an uninterrupted flow of money in the budget for future years. And I think more, even more importantly, to come to the town with a lower number than we would need if we exhausted all those stabilization funds, um, which was the issue in FY 2014, when the first override failed, we had to come back the next year for a much larger number. So our assumption at this point, based on kind of our preliminary calculations, is a number in the range of about a $2 million override, uh, which would extend us for at least five more years beyond FY 23, um, which is what we projected the last go-around in 2015. We're actually on year number eight right now, uh, of, of that, or we will have eight years then, so. Um, that's, you know, those are the numbers we're looking at, um, and Kate put together a nice timeline of, you know, kinda how the, the whole process would look based on her experience before, so you wanna, wanna go through that a little bit?
Sure. Um, yeah, so you, um, Greg, you covered some of my points in the, in the budget subcommittee meeting. We had a, a pretty good discussion about, um, you know, asking for.
meeting. We had a pretty good discussion about, you know, asking for an override this coming spring or the following spring. And, you know, I think the public should know that we, you know, we talked about it, you know, pluses and minuses. And 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 I think, you know, Hugh made the point that it really comes down to stability of our of our of our budget and not getting to that point where we really have to make significant cuts. So, you know, it's a tough, I think it was a tough decision and and there were some things that point towards next year, towards the following year, but I think this spring makes the most sense. So I put together, I was pretty involved in the 2015, 2014 and 15 override. So I just put together a timeline of sort of the the process, you know, based on what what we did in 2015, which was successful. And I think if you look at the bottom of the sheet, I outlined sort of the school committee's role. And this initiative is, you know, it has to be community driven. It's not school committee driven. You know, we're asking the community for money that we're going to spend. So, you know, it can't come from us. But that said, we can, you know, we have to support it and we can serve as a liaison to the to the override steering committee, help with, you know, numbers, budget, providing any sort of data and statistics to the override committee to help support their their mission and supporting the campaign. But but again, not running that campaign. So timeline wise, you know, I don't know how much you want me to walk you through this, but, you know, I think it's important to get early support from from other boards and make sure we're all on the same page. That's something we could certainly do, sort of building out a team and and then just providing that support for them. And so I think late November is a typical sort of start time for this with a relatively quiet behind the scenes campaign over the winter. And then, you know, March, April, May, the dates, somewhere I wrote them. Oh, I have them on the top. The town meeting is May 10th and and town election is May 15th. So we're looking, you know, those are the timelines we're aiming for. And happy to answer any questions. Did you want me to go over any more specifics?
I think, well, I heard you lay up this timeline at the budget subcommittee, and I really felt it was important that you were able to see. And so it's great. Happy to have you done it before. And if you can be a guide, and if you're sitting on the budget, you do that. So I think we're well positioned to kind of do campaign. I don't think the campaign starts until, you know, we don't do do much or anything until that town meeting, which is two weeks from now. So
Right.
I assume assemble the interested part, community members very quickly. And I think that's a good way to show the same way the budget subcommittee does the other.
So I need people, if you can, you should look at the budget calculator page that we have in the in the shared documents and look at the second set of lines, which is the override this year. We're in FY 22 now, correct?
Yeah.
So the override really would apply for FY 23.
Yep.
Which maybe we have to shift all those numbers over one.
Yeah.
Can you point?
So I want everyone to, so it's budget calculator nine.
I'll share it with everybody right now.
Okay.
Twenty-one?
Yeah, 21.
And I think we still need, we should update that to look at the 23 now because we keep shifting the date out. But I think the key number for you to look at would be line number 18, which is the projected operating shortfall. And that takes into account our appropriated funds minus basically our operating budget. And we we fill basically the operating shortfall up with stabilization funds. And for example, this year, we're spending $1.5 million more than we're taking in from revenue from the town. So we're already in that that type of hole. And next year, we'll spend 1.9 million. And if you look at line 18, that grows as it's projected out to 22, 23, 24, that grows by $400,000, $500,000 a year. And so that $400,000, $500,000 a year is the growth above which our town is able to support education. The thing we didn't have last time is this line number 20 called additional stabilization. That's funds that we get that we don't expect to get, but we seem to get every year from the state, either through chapter 70 funds, from additional chapter 70 funds, or from additional revenue from other sources, that has allowed us to stay ahead of the five-year projection out to a seven and eight-year projection. And in this override projection, we're actually adding in that additional stabilization money, which is truly just other funds that we now know that we get on a regular enough basis to project it as a number. That that reduces our override by a considerable amount, about $300,000, no matter how you slice it, because we get that money kind of every year like an override.
Yeah. And if we, I just zeroed out the override amount in the second section there. So beginning with column B or row B 15, that section there. And you can see, you know, FY 23, we're fine. We're in the positive. We have a million left in stabilization. We go into a hole in FY 24. Then you can see FY 25, that dramatic spread, about a $3 million short, $3.5 million shortfall without that override. You know, then if we add the $2 million back in.
So so as an example, if we throw $2 million in in year in 23, which is when we'd be getting that, we'd really just be bringing our operating budget up to our appropriated funds up to where our budget is actually at. So it only gets us back to baseline.
Right.
It doesn't even get us making getting that much more into our stabilization fund. Now, with additional stabilization, we gain a couple of years in the positive, but only a couple of years. And then we'll start eating at the the stabilization fund. So the danger of our override strategy is and has always and has been with this plan, the fact that we build ourselves deficits that grow and grow and grow, and we add some money in at the beginning that we'll take out at the end. And we have to chase to catch up to that next year. So if we get through 23 and we don't get an override, we'll we'll be able to, you know, survive to the next year, but we won't have any backup in the following year. And the stability thing I'm touching on is it is a it's a cancer on our district when we're threatening to cut programs and teachers and staff as part of an override. It undermines our ability to progress and grow. And all the things that we're thinking about now, you make ELL stronger, make DEI stronger, all these things that are important to the growth of the district, all go secondary when you're cutting a second grade teacher and you have 30 kids in a class, or you don't have art anymore, or you don't have JV sports anymore. And we've been there and we've done that. So.
Well, in some cases, Hugh, if I can, if I can interject, we still haven't gained back some of the things that that we lost in the in the past override, if I'm not mistaken. Weren't there weren't there world language issues that we still haven't been able to put back?
We cut we cut middle school languages, and we still don't have AP span. We've cut AP language, AP languages. We didn't have a fifth year, and we still haven't brought back AP languages. And that's nine, 10 years later, we haven't had AP languages, because we cut the whole program that feeds it. And, you know, we cut band for, you know, we brought back band. There are a bunch of things that we cut. We cut JV sports. Even our even our busing changed dramatically around these things. So we've done a lot of things in the past that we just don't want to go back to. And having stability is shockingly good for the district and and very good for the ability of for us to grow without threat significant financial catastrophe and really undermining classrooms, undermining teachers' ability to progress professionally. So you don't want to threaten your younger teachers.
Well, I think it's important, too, for those that are kind of listening at home is, again, as I mentioned, this is part of the long-term strategic plan that has been approved by the various town boards. And the schedule of this is FY 23. And it falls right in line with that timeline for all the other projects that the town's anticipating that we all need across the entire town. So, you know, I think it's important that we try to get behind this and really make the community at large understand how our budgets work, understand the shortfall, the structural deficits. And again, as, you know, Hugh mentioned, and we've all experienced those of us with older kids in the district, the dramatic cuts that our kids faced when the first override, the FY 15 override failed. And that it's taken so long to get these things back in. So I think it's really important to kind of get people behind this and make them understand the importance of it.
And I do think the school committee at that time was very honest with the public of how long it would last. And you, you who was here, did a really good job of of keeping to your promises and and even exceeding expectations and making it last even longer. So I'm hoping that we have built up some trust with the community that we, you know, we ask for money when we need when we need it, and we we are, will take the responsibility seriously to 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 make it last as long as we possibly can.
Yeah, I think we underestimated that additional amount of money that's going to come in, which was really a blessing. But and and realistically, the average increases are dependent on our negotiations with our educators' unions and all that stuff. So that plays a role here in where those monies go and how long they go. And that's going to play a role in what our understanding is of the longevity of the override. I do think I have to fix this, so move to 23, though, because you have a million, $2 million extra in your cumulative stabilization if you started in 22 rather than 23.
Do we own this? This is our spreadsheet? We can?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can, I'll do that right now.
Everybody's on the.
You don't have it? You did. You want to print it?
Just a box.
It's it's interactive.
What we do want to be careful with, though, is is fully whether it is messing with the cells because it's all formula.
I'm doing it right now.
Oh, no, I'm not going to.
I'm messing with the cells as we speak. Sorry.
Hugh can mess it. I'm not touching it.
Tough luck, guys.
So the FY 22 cumulative stabilization, actually, that FY 22 column is accurate. So that has the correct operating revenues, the current stabilization balance.
Watch how I mess with your cells, by the way, as I blow it all up.
Save a local copy.
221.
So you've spoken about a budget number of around $2 million.
All right, so.
When do you nail that number down?
So I corrected the override calculator. I don't know if anyone's looked at it.
You're not understanding it's down to that?
No, I just I just I just shifted it out to 23 as the first override year. And realistically, $2 million gets us three years, four years?
Oh, four years, yeah.
You want a minimum of five because of precedence, correct?
Well, then you go bigger.
Right. And I asked you to nail down the number to that.
Yeah, you know, it's ballpark in that range. And along with that, it depends on on future savings. It depends on future revenues, additional revenues coming in to the community. Depends on whether or not we have another pandemic. I think, you know, the the fact that we shut down schools back, you know, 18 months ago, or however long ago it was, we saved considerable money that ended up going into the stabilization fund and helped to get us additional time, as it were. So, you know, there's there's lots of factors. So while on the surface it may be, you know, four to five years, there's reasons why we were able to extend it to year eight now.
Well, so I heard your point. I'm very grateful that you demonstrated what a good experience in the past and what we do. Okay. Any other questions? Superintendent, you all. Subcommittees, working groups, and liaison reports. We've had some some committees need communications.
Yeah, budgets, good communications we met.
Should we?
If there are any else who want to add a communication.
We should probably just talk about how it's in our goals, but the public can't see those quite yet. We did decide to commit to having similar to Brian's sort of coffee hours, to have similar school committee hours once a month, sort of staggered with his. So every two weeks, people will get an opportunity to sit down with Dr. Blake or sit down with school committee members. And we'll rotate through. We just approved the goal. So you sneakily approved, agreed to participate in that. So we'll rotate through and have, you know, I think we decided we'd set up a three-month schedule and advertise it somehow social media or, you know, the weekly weekly announcement for people to, just to increase our transparency and build some support.
And that's not just the subcommittee's communications. That's all of us. So we'll take a, we'll take a day and answer the public's questions, answer any sample, little.
It could be day or evening, but not to be.
Yeah, we'll write it. So Greg and I are going to do the first one, I think, Friday, October 8th at 8:30. Hope that we can get some elementary school parents after drop off. But we can do evening ones.
And we have our first newsletter of the year, October 8th.
Whatever the Friday is, yeah.
I contemplated the brewery, but that was frowned upon. I don't, you guys can. Yeah, we've got that one covered.
Maybe do it at the high school football.
You can come and ask.
High school football game.
There you go.
That's a good idea.
I'll go with you to that.
I love them.
Fine.
Where are you, where are you going?
We're going to the football game.
Oh, good. Yeah, actually.
It's a little booth over by the.
You're seeing it every one.
I mean, every game.
Yeah.
Stand with her and run out on the field with injuries.
Budget, is there anything further to discuss?
No, I think we covered it.
Yes. Anybody else need?
Yeah.
Jeff and I met with TEC.
Oh, good.
The other night. They had their first meeting, just discussed some goals for the year, basic rights workshop, setting that up. Sort of nice to, it was a nice introduction to the parents who are on there about what TEC is. There was some discussion about maybe giving that same presentation to the school committee at some point, again, to sort of reintegrate TEC, which we're required by district to have a TEC, and make sure that we're working with them to sort of keep advancing the goals of the district to build our special education programs. And Karen supports a big part of that.
I also attended the high school council meeting. And the focus of that was looking at the school improvement plan, which is now on year two. So it was a 20 to 22 plan. And specifically, you know, some of the milestones that were there spoke a lot about that. At that point, the MCAS data was still embargoed, but spoke about some of the goals related to AP courses and number of tests being taken and the scores that students are achieving, which was all really great, that they're on their way to achieving that goal. There was also recurring discussion about a change in the HAP policy in the high school and some feedback among students and teachers that maybe that's not a box that they want to consider opening at this point. But maybe it wasn't that big of a deal to leave, as is in the current dress code.
Good.
The high school field hockey and volleyball teams are undefeated.
There you go. That's the name of the party today.
Lot of fun. Lot of fun.
Field hockey is being, I was just, just a quick.
Eight, eight, 51. Throwing that up.
I go to every game. Field hockey last year was some very good, very good play. I go to every game. Field hockey last year lost some very good, very good players. In fact, Sarah played a lot of the ball, she scored two goals at the college. It's a big thing. So they lost a lot of their players. Why? Because we have a couple of Ford and James students who love field hockey. We have Galton from Holland, and Galton from Germany, an offensive player, the Holland player, and the defensive players from Germany. They are fantastic. They're filling a player's career from the... You have an opportunity to go see a field hockey game when it's in the turf.
Our new star is a school choice student from Georgetown.
From where?
Georgetown.
From Raleigh.
Who came here for school choice. And she is an absolutely spectacular volleyball player.
That's our qualifying college to win national championships in skiing. If you're in the whole cross-country team, you can stand in there.
I mean, the girls knew this kid from club volleyball. They said, "It's a great environment. You'll love it here." She didn't love being in Georgetown. She came over, and she's been a huge addition. The girl's been, she's been a great part of the community, so it's been great for her.
Okay, that's it. That's my 30 seconds. Thank you. Bouchers and bills. Okay. Is that... I can send you them. Of course, I carry them all the time. Don't know if it's coming. Hold on, hold on. There it is. Thank you. Move the district school committee to accept the open session meeting minutes from September 9, 2021.
Second.
Senior, thank you. Is there a motion in there?
It's moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, district. Good night.
Might stay out for a bit.
It was real great that some of the students were there, because I mean, I have no other people, teachers were there, but Jeff. And then Karen was there.
The Wi-Fi was down.
No.
That's a problem. That's a crisis.
It's your 12-year-old and it's my parents. That's the call I got, like, you know...